And now call to order the August twenty sixth, twenty twenty five Board of Trustees meeting time being six thirty P M. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Clerk, make it a roll call, please.
Trustee Uigan?
Yes.
Trustee Cannon? Trustee Daly?
Present.
Trustee Moyer?
Here.
Trustee Teetz?
Here.
Mayor Pretend Mason?
Here.
Mayor Shosi?
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum?
Thank you. Are there any amendments to the agenda this evening? No. Any conflicts of interest with the agenda this evening? No. All right.
Sorry. I don't know if I need to disclose this, and I can remove myself if necessary later, but I did sit on the original board of the Resource Center, and I just wanted to make that known. It was a few years ago.
Okay, thank you. Um, now it's time for public comment. Members of the public wishing to speak will be given three minutes. State your name for the record. Sign at the podium. This is for non-agenda items. Okay, no public comment. Uh, first up, we're gonna have a presentation. Um, it's our strategic plan update. Ms. Kelly Huddling, the deputy town administrator, will be presenting on this item.
Good evening, Mayor and trustees. Um, before you tonight is a strategic plan update. Um, so I won't go through every single line item in your packet, but I will go over the highlights. So just as a reminder for the folks at home, the Board of Trustees did adopt a strategic plan with four key areas of focus, which is grow responsibly, ensure strong town operations, cultivate and nurture community spaces, and foster economic vibrancy. So, um, some of the things that we've been working on this year, and there's been a lot of movement. And as you can see in the packet, there's some complete, but then there's a whole lot in progress. So a lot of things will be coming up here soon and completed here very quickly, um, in this next year or so. Um, so the major thing so far is, um, as we know, the completion of our major, um, massive infrastructure projects for the town, which is the completion of the water treatment plant and water reclamation facility. This doubles the town's capacity to treat water and help secure, um, for our long-term future and enables us to welcome additional commercial growth. Um, so this is a very exciting update that the town took. Um, the engineering team and everyone on the project team, this was, um, massive lift for the whole team. Um, so that's not to be understated. That's a big deal for all of us. Um, also, the planning department has been very, very busy, as you all have seen with housing and and some of the changes of the state law. Um, but the major heavy lift this year was the housing needs assessment that helps identify, um, staff that the gaps that that there might be in, um, you know, look for strategies for available housing. So, um, there's a lot more to come with that, as you'll hear in the upcoming months, that they're gonna be working on and looking for additional grant funding. Earlier this summer, the town completed the accessible fishing dock at the Wellville Ponds. Um, this was a grant-funded project from the state of Colorado, and this ensures additional accessibility for our residents and users. Um, and so there was a ribbon cutting with the post board earlier this summer, and so this is a great additional amenity to have. Um, and someone that loves to fish myself, very exciting. So to see the next generation too, to learn something that's so, um, exciting and prized. Um, also, in partnership with the Main Street program, um, there was a big lift to get the Main Street mini grant done. And so, as you recall, that was the completion of the two murals that are downtown, and I believe that there's gonna be a ribbon cutting for those here soon. Um, so you wanna stay tuned for that date when it's announced. Uh, the shop shop local marketing materials were created, and we're gonna be working to see how do we engage with those and use those here shortly. And then also the installation of the xylophone. Um, it did have sustain a little bit of, um, damage to it, so it will get reinstalled, um, here this fall. And then also the, um, in partnership with the library and K R F C during the Main Street markets, there was the singer-songwriters, um, the literacy series that was performed during the markets. And then also kind of listening to our residents that we've heard through community surveys, there was a need to, how do we reach residents more? And so we launched the town podcast, um, earlier this year. We've done a couple of episodes. If you have ideas for episodes, let us know. Um, we'll probably do something here this fall. Um, so we're always looking for new content and new ideas on that. And then big things underway that we have is the transportation and mobility master plan, um, the parks, recreation, open space, and trails, prose master plan, and community center feasibility study. Um, that's underway, and there's, we're still seeking feedback. We'll seek through speed, feedback through the entire project, um, and surveys will be mailed, um, to select residents. Um, but we definitely, we need that information to to figure out what the needs of the community and to determine what they want and need. And then obviously, as we all know, in twenty twenty six, we will embark on the Cleveland Avenue construction project. This will be one of our most impactful downtown projects, um, to improve accessibility and drainage, um, and kind of the feel and look of downtown. So, um, a lot has, a lot of work has been done on that, but construction will really kick off next year. So that's kind of the high level. There's a whole lot in your packet, and we'll keep coming back to you. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Any questions from the board on this presentation? Oh, trustee Daly?
Uh, very exciting. You're with tons. So thus far, so much progress. So thank you so much for the presentation. It's very exciting to hear all the progress we've made.
Trustee Moyer?
Yeah, I love the dashboards. Um, I feel like it was just yesterday that we put that strategic plan together, and so it's very exciting to see all the progress. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have the building codes and energy adoption process update. Mr. Cody Byrd and Kelly Dykstra will be presenting on this item.
Good evening, Mayor and trustees. I'm Cody Byrd, planning director. Um, you guys hear enough from me, uh, over the course of many weeks. So it is my distinct pleasure to introduce Kelly Dykstra, our building official. Many of you have worked with him in the past, uh, tremendous asset for our team, but he is going to be presenting the bulk of the presentation tonight, and then I can help field any questions as necessary. Um, and I also wanna give a quick shout out to Danae Smith, our permit technician three, who's very instrumental in helping put these packages together too, and oversees our business licensing and permitting processes. So, um, those quick introductions is all I really had to say, and I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Dykstra.
Well, you got the B team tonight. Hello. Uh, seeing a lot of your faces, thanks for having me tonight. Um, a lot of you may or may not know me. Um, a couple of quick things about me, not for personal, because I want, I want you guys to know who your building official is. I'm a Colorado native, grew up in Steamboat Springs, a small town. When I was, um, fifteen, I moved to Aurora, big city. Best thing about that culture shock was I met my wife at that time. So, well, not at the time, but my later-to-be-wife. Yeah, yeah. Um, and then at twenty-one years old, I her and I started a framing company. So as I framed houses, was carpenter for fifteen-plus years, and we also, um, together built inspect houses. Um, and then around two thousand eight, when the economy kinda went south, a couple of elbow surgeries, I had a inspector friend that was inspecting our projects come and say, you need to be an inspector. I said, no way, that sounds terrible to me. Well, he talked me into it, and it's been a pleasure ever since. My point in telling you that is I just want you to know, when we do this code adoption, I'm not a code nut. I'm not about the regulation. I'm about helping people. Um, yes, we follow life safety. We follow these rules. I have experience. I've swung a hammer, so I can put myself in a lot of people's shoes. We've owned our own business. I can relate to this. I know a lot of the different dynamics of what people go through. So when we take this into consideration when we do these adoptions. I was told I was gonna have a clicker, so my clicker is not functioning tonight. Um, so I'm gonna try to work with Hannah here for the first time ever. So real quick, like, um, the I codes are the codes that we adopt. Um, we, the I codes come out every three years. Um, what we try to do locally is give our builders and inspectors and partners at Safe Built in Northern Colorado an opportunity to go two cycles. If we feel like in smaller towns, we change the cycles too quickly, there's too much turnaround. We'd like somebody to get set, get with their prices, and, um, have a little bit longer staying power in a code cycle. Right now, we're under the twenty eighteen code cycles. We're proposing and and hoping that we can, uh, go to the twenty twenty-four, which means we've skipped the twenty-one cycle because of this every. So some of these, I'm gonna go through this. There are a lot, it seems like there are a lot of slides. I'm gonna be really quick, I promise. And, um, some of the changes are gonna be capturing some of that twenty-one that we missed in the eighteen. So I was just gonna give you some highlights of some of the changes. We're not gonna go through all these books, I promise you that. It is, and Cody mentioned Danae, um, she's been a great teammate and part, she's your permit tech three. She's the voice of the, um, building department. She answers all the calls. She also has some other hats that she wears. But her and I, since the beginning of the year, have sat with Northern Colorado teams, including Fort Collins, Loveland, all of Safe Built's towns, which is most of the, um, east side of the highway, um, and Lermak County. We sat with them going through these codes, and what we're trying to do is align them with, um, I had a timer and I forgot to start, so excuse me, I started that. Um, we have a, we try to align. We're not gonna compete with anybody. We have our own local needs and our own, like, local design criteria, but we want to give our builders some consistency through these towns. So we've been meeting since the beginning of the year. This is kind of a, in your packet, there's a, um, kinda showing what we've done. So through this quarter, and we're still continuing to work with this group for energy codes and to things that are coming up. Today is the twenty-sixth, so this is our first overhead, kinda high-level presentation for you guys, saying, this is kinda what's coming. This is what we're gonna talk about. Um, and we're hoping to have this October fourteenth first reading of, uh, the ordinance and then the second reading on the twenty-eighth. We're hoping to have these codes adopted by the first of the year and, um, starting to enforce them. Just so you guys know, as a team with Safe Built, and our philosophy is we're not gonna go out there January second and and hammer people with these new codes. We're gonna work with them kind of at educational level, work with them about six months and 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 say, okay, we missed it this time. Here's the new code. We're gonna work on this on the next time. So it's a work with, um, partnership with our builders. Part of the adopting codes is we have to follow the state of Colorado. They have statutes and laws, and they have a lot of model codes that they implement, and they make it to where we need to adopt them when as a jurisdiction, we adopt new codes. There's kind of a leverage little bit of deal, but it it keeps people from being stagnant in the codes jurisdictions. Um, I think it's a good thing. Um, and where we're at right now is we have to adopt an energy code, um, that's more current than the twenty twenty-one. We're gonna ask you guys to do the twenty twenty-four, but because we're adopting these codes, and we have, we have to do this, the state's also gonna say that we need to adopt what they're calling the Colorado Model Electric Ready and Solar Ready Codes. It's an energy-driven code, but now, um, it's, a lot of it's electrical, um, but the energy part is driving the code. That model electric is, is, we don't have an option. This is a state deal, so I'll, I'll give you some highlights on it. Um, what the, what the electric ready means is we're, our new buildings, not existing buildings, but our new buildings need to be to where we have gas appliances. We need to also have electrical devices there so that we have, they switch to electrical, that element is in place. Doesn't mean we have to have electrical this time. Doesn't mean we're getting rid of gas appliances or anything yet. Um, I say yet, that's down the road. That is a, a drive, um, for the state. Um, but this is what we're doing is this is electric ready. They also have, um, we're putting a path for solar panels, um, that are ready. Um, and then, uh, also some E V charging. These are in all new homes. Starting with the, you'll hear me talk about residential and commercial. It's single-family and townhomes is our residential, our commercial is our public buildings, commercial buildings, and also, um, apartment buildings. So the solar ready, um, for a residential home, we are at, they, a new home will have to provide three hundred square feet of a solar-ready plane on their roof. We also have to have a design or a path for the cable conduit raceway to get to a panel. The reason for this is we're wanting to be solar-ready. Right now, what we're doing is we'll get an engineer report to say that the, an existing home has to, the design has to support the panels, and then we get electrical designs to, um, provide the arrays. So what we're doing is saying, this is gonna be easier in the future in having some items in place for solar-ready. Same thing with commercial. Instead of the three hundred square feet solar-ready zone, it's forty percent of that roof plane has to be solar-ready for panels. Same, same thing with the electrical, has to be there in place. The only challenge really of this is, is the penetration is clearly, they have to have a clear space. You can't have attic vents there. You can't have plumbing vents there. You can't have a chimney coming out the middle. So it's, it's all about being, um, solar-ready. Electrical vehicle ready or E V charging, um, this is for electric cars, and again, it's a ready requirement. In our residential homes, um, for electrical ready, we're gonna have to have the panel, the cable. We have everything to a receptacle. We don't have to have the receptacle because clearly each individual different electric vehicle has a different receptacle. However, we're gonna have a plate on it, so it's electrical-ready, electric vehicle-ready. Commercial is, um, a little bit different. Um, when I say commercial, there's, there'll be a chart here, but, um, for the electrical charging, it's gonna be in our parking spaces, in the parking lots. So what we're doing is allowing or requiring different phases of, um, Danae wrote this down for me, electric vehicle supply equipment. This is in our parking lots. This is where we want people to charge overnight or during long stays, their electrical vehicles. So this chart that's on your, uh, slide here, I wanted to just go over a couple of things. There's a difference between R two in building and R two in planning and zoning, not, not the same thing. So that's, all that information on the right there is a little bit overkill, but my, my point is, is R two in building means apartment homes, um, hotels where people stay for more than ten days or have the capability. So it's people that are, um, not transient. They're, they're not moving in and out of it. And the building in the state says, these are the places, the R two are the places clearly we want to have the most charging stations. I got a picture of a diner here, meaning that, no, we don't need a lot for a diner. People aren't gonna be staying there very long. So they, they've put out a chart here that we don't need necessarily go over, but my point in the slide is showing you that we are gonna have electrical-ready phases. There'll be a full system or quick charging is one of the options. There'll be electrical ready to where you have the conduit, everything ready to put the, the actual charger there. There'll be one that's light space ready, which means you have conduit to the spaces, and you also have some extra spaces there for future parking. The whole goal is to be ready, be working with builders, with the economy and everything else to get, when we go electric, um, eventually to be ready for it. Moving to, this is, this is a little bit more moving out of the state model code. We're going into the energy code that we have to adopt, and we're gonna adopt the twenty twenty-four or propose to adopt the twenty twenty-four. Um, this is the residential part of it. What the code still tries to do on a residential home is we're trying to make them as efficient as we can. The building code has allowed paths in the past that they call prescriptive, which means the code says you need to have this R value in your insulation. You need to meet this. It's a prescriptive code. I can tell you that the industry and the codes are trying to get away from that. They're getting more to where we have performance-based homes, to where you actually have models that they have tested, and this is where we come into our en- energy raiders and our, um, hers indicators. Um, and then the code also has a, uh, E R I, energy rating, uh, system to where it's based on actual models and performance as opposed to just prescribing something. The reason why we do that, it's a whole lot more effective, a whole lot more efficient when we prescribe something, just like engineers and anything else, we almost have to over-engineer it. So truth be told, eventually, and most of our residential builders are doing these raiders anyway, or they rest check these model codes anyway, um, it's gonna be less, less cost-effective for homeowners to stay on this model path, if you will. Just from twenty, twenty eighteen to twenty-four, you know, this energy code is a, always seems to be a hot topic for, for some reason. The, um, so I wanted to bring this is we've skipped the twenty twenty-one, so I don't wanna go into details here, but my point is we haven't changed a whole lot at all from the twenty eighteen codes that we already have adopted. When the towns or jurisdictions went to the twenty twenty-one, they bumped it up, and they learned that some of these increases, like more R value in the, in the roof. Everyone's pretty familiar with R values in the roof. Well, it's forty-nine. In twenty twenty-one, they jumped it up to sixty. Well, they realized just with different science and different, uh, installations, that was not working out. So they did back it back down to forty-nine. So the building code is a live, living, um, directive to where industry changes it. Um, sometimes they do get a little aggressive and they can back off. This is a situation where we're pretty much in line with what we already have. A little bit more in the walls, um, is a continuous of five insulation. We're just adding a little bit more insulation in your walls. Um, one thing that's new, that's a little, always made sense to me, or didn't make sense earlier, on a slab foundation, which we're talking about underground foundation, uh, insulation, the code was two feet. Well, our frost depth here is thirty inches. So they have moved it now to where we're gonna insulate down to three feet, which makes way more sense to me anyway. Most builders would go to three feet anyway, because the frost line, this is the code kinda catching up. So I hate doing that. That sounds so, um, um, also, um, with the energy code, and this gets a little bit more electric, um, is the element part of it, is in residential now, we're, for our lighting, we're gonna require dimmer switches, um, uh, dimmers, automatic sensors in our residential homes. Um, it's a, it's a ore thing. Um, what we're finding is too many people, believe it or not, just like we all were raised, turn off the lights, close the door, doesn't happen. So the code is kind of making some simpler, um, devices into the electrical to save on our energy. From twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-one, I, the cost is always, um, even though in all my classes and all my books, cost isn't something that I should be, um, I'm life safety, not cost, but this is a reality. This is, I told you guys I was a builder, um, framer. I know what this is, so I know the reality of cost. So we'll try to put some numbers together. This is a good example on the energy code. Um, in twenty eighteen, from twenty twenty-one, the jump we did not take, the, the value went up thirty-five hundred dollars or the average on it, on a single-family home. I think it's, I think if I remember right, this is the National Association of Builders. I think it was based on a seventeen-hundred or just under two thousand square foot home. But that price increased on the insulation alone, the energy part of a loan, the thirty-five hundred. From twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-four, it decreased. We backed off some, remember I mentioned we kinda backed off some of the things? So truth be told, we're a few bucks, the math says we're a few bucks under what we were in twenty eighteen. Now that said, I just told you about the electrical devices that we're gonna have to add to houses with our dimmers, maybe some control sensors and different things like that. That's gonna bring that number back up. Don't have the numbers that way. Um, I can tell you as a side note, this is what industries bank on, the, um, electrical companies. Mostly, there's been some catches before, um, to where they're a little bit behind, the market's a little bit behind on the codes, but most of the developers know and and, uh, fabricators know that this is coming. So our dimmers prices will probably go down, to be honest with you, because now they're required, they're gonna be in every store, they're gonna be around. Same with the, um, with our energy code or insulation. When we have these codes, that's what the store stock, so it's almost more expensive to buy a less graded, um, product. Commercial, uh, energy, some of them, there's, there are lots of changes. I'm just trying to come up with some highlights here. I'm not gonna go through all these with you. Guys would, um, not want me back ever again. Um, so our, what we, I told you a little bit about the performance on residential homes with our energy testing. One of them is called like a blower door or air leakage, which maybe some of you are familiar. Basically, like you go in there, you close all the doors, and you see how much air exchange you have. How much air are you losing out of the house, the leakage, if you will? Reason this is important is because we don't want to heat or cool the outside air as much as we can. Clearly, it's cold air you're bringing in. You want to keep losing as much air as you can, so you save on the energy. Well, we're moving into the, into the commercial buildings now with the same kind of testing. I don't think it's gonna be a huge, um, hit on commercial, or, you know, everybody's doing it in commercial anyway. All the companies that are doing what we're doing in commercial will just move in, or in residential will be moving into the commercial as well. And we require, just kinda like we do on residential homes, we require a documentation saying that hasn't met this leakage requirement. Same thing, um, a lot of commercial buildings too, with the same thing with the switches. We have, um, again, remember, commercial too is our apartment buildings as well. Apartment buildings have clubhouses, they have pools, all these kinda things. So all of our switches, whether it's a swimming pool or or bathrooms, we have continuous exhaust fans or con, or continuous humidity in the, uh, east, southeast, they have dehumidifiers, you know? These are constantly running. So the code is gonna say, okay, now we're gonna have to have these time sensors on these pieces of equipment as well. So you're gonna find that through the energy code, the electricians and the energy are working together to come up with, um, energy savings. Um, again, s- same with the lights. We're gonna have the lights dimmers, just like, well, like our exhaust. Everything is gonna be a little bit more controlled with electrical devices. Okay, so some of the more fun to me anyway, codes or or changes are the actual building code. So the commercial building codes are, um, some of the highlights that we are trying to keep up with, and this is kind of extremely depressing that we have to do this, but this is kinda came in the twenty-ones, is previously in an educational or school or anything that you have, you're teaching, um, kids or students with more than, uh, fifty people, you need, you are not allowed to lock, you cannot lock yourselves in the room. I mean, if picture kids back in the day, no one wants to lock the teacher out. You can't do that. Well, now, unfortunately, with the climate of the world and some of this, uh, violent situations we have, we need, the code needs to catch up and say, well, no, we have to be able to lock it from the inside and the outside and still have egress to where, when we get a chance to go out of the room, we, we need to go. So it's kind of like a a fancier crash bar, you know, the crash bars when you're coming out of the stores, your panic hardware. It's a, we needed to, uh, change this code so that we could now allow with, uh, panic hardware in a sense to get out of the room that we can lock from the inside. Another interesting thing with the commercial that's great is, in my opinion, is, um, they've never had the, the, uh, engineers have never had a criteria for tornadoes. First thing people are gonna think, oh, my gosh, we're gonna design for tornadoes. Not necessarily. Um, we're gonna take our most, um, protected buildings, if you will, such as the educational ambulatory, you can see the list here, hospitals, fire stations, police stations, and we're gonna increase the structural demands on the uplift of the roof. Okay, so that means that, I don't know, um, in Florida, uh, they've designed, they have, they have the hurricanes for, so a lot of engineering came out of Florida with the hurricanes and the uplift on the roofs. Well, now we have some, a lot of information from data collecting two thousand and eleven for tornado studies. So they are gonna up the demands on the structures of the uplift of some of these, um, not that every building isn't important, but some of these, uh, clearly more sensitive buildings. Oh, carbon monoxide, everybody knows about carbon monoxide. It's in every single house, um, every single level within fifteen feet of all the, our sleeping rooms. Um, never before, unless it's a, a institutional occupancy, has it been required in a commercial building. Now, as simple as it is, because it's a very inexpensive upgrade, an extra layer of safety for carbon monoxide detection is in any, any building that has a fuel-fired appliance, you know, whether it's a furnace, uh, boilers, um, the only things that, that they would eliminate is the private, or they're sorry, the, um, supplementary ones like a, uh, fireplace, you know, it's more of your major fuel-burning appliances. We'll need to have a CO detection in it now. It's kinda surprising we haven't had it. People have asked me in our municipal buildings, do you have it? No, we don't need it. Um, and there was also, if you're not sleeping in a building, you don't need smoke detectors. You know, you shouldn't have to do that. So this is where the code, though, is on the carbon monoxide, just picking it up. The reason why it says there, if you have a private garage, we still protect buildings from cars running in the garage. Someone will leave a door open so you get carbon monoxide in the, in the building as well. So that's why the private garages. Residential I R C code changes, which is our single-family and townhomes, the code is trying to work with some affordable housing, come up with some new codes, because it hasn't always been that supportive, if you will, of, um, duplexes stacked units. So this code is a new one that's come out that says if we have a stacked building, if you picture your basement, as long as we have the stairs, smoke protected, if you will, and we can have duplex situation. Um, part of the deal is don't, I brought up the basement, understand that's not a dwelling. You don't have kitchens down there and anything else like that. So your basement isn't necessarily a dwelling at this point, but it's trying to provide some opportunities with some interconnection of detection, smoke, carbon monoxide throughout the house, to where they're of allowing some potential situations for, for stacked buildings. Another residential thing, since we talked a little bit about the solar, uh, panel restrictions, and now we're having a lot of, of, or not restrictions, solar panel, um, yeah, um, so we have solar banks now. These are battery banks in the garage. Great example here, and this is what's happening, but guess what happens now? Because we have these in the garage. If you look at the bottom picture, you can vision a car coming in, and you can see that the bank is clearly out in the driving path. We've had too many pe- people, unfortunately, hitting these banks. So the code now says, guess what? We now we have to have a code, so when we get these, uh, and we'll get permitting, we need to put these banks in safe places. So we don't need to go over the details, but this is what this code is saying. We need to put them in the garages in safe places. Um, we have, again, a little bit affordable housing, a little bit common sense, in my opinion. Um, we've always had bunk beds in a house. Um, but if you have a loft, the code would say you would need to have an emergency escape window, which is But if you have a loft, the code would say you would need to have an emergency escape window, which is very similar to what we have in our rooms. Well, now the code is saying, if you have a loft, you don't need to have that with some parameters, with these parameters, ladders. You don't need to have an egress window. So they're allowing a place for some high level bunk beds, if you will. It came out of the tiny homes, if this is allowed in a tiny home or a tiny house on wheels, why is this not allowed for everybody? And with some, with some regulation, it is now allowed. This is a simple one, I won't get into this, but this is just the code always changing, always protecting us from different things, lead. We've allowed to this point, eight percent could be lead in our pipe fittings, they've cut it down to point two five of, so quarter percent. So the code is always trying to better, we don't use as much. Piping, steel piping, lead piping in our buildings anymore, so let's take this opportunity to slowly work all the lead out of a building, is what the code tries to do, does. Some highlights for upcoming changes. That we'll be working with is, you've probably heard about a WUI code, the state model is saying, when we have land that's close to. Wild, wild potential fire areas, we need to have some hardening of the houses, which means. We need to have limit, we can't have blue spruce right by the house. Combustible elements, fences, we're going to separate a little bit. Our WUI map, this is, this map is always growing, you can see that it hardly touches Wellington at all. But I feel like there could be a little bit of strategy that just have a little bit touch every town, so that you adopt the codes to have them. But this is something that we'll work with our WFPD, we're starting to set up some meetings, and this is a collaboration. On how we review it, who looks at the landscaping and what have you, but it's something we have to adopt. Again, it's one of the states, we'll have to have it by April first or tw- I think it's on the next. Maybe not. April twenty six, thanks. We have to have that done, so we will be back, the fire department and us will be back to get, address that model code. Overall, we've talked about, I think you guys know, that the energy is trying to get as low carbon footprint as we can. We don't have to adopt, we will have to adopt the model energy code from the state when we go through this again. So we don't have, we're going to adopt the twenty twenty four, we don't have to adopt the, the state's model until we do it again, which if we stay in our every other cycle will be twenty thirty. Timeline here is, is what we're trying to, I kind of went over the, a little bit. We've gone over all of our meetings, we're going to continue having energy meetings with our local partners. July one, we'll start to have some other adoptions that we need to talk about, or NEC, I think, let's go to the next one. I know I'm getting close on time here. Our NEC is, we have it in our codes, it's, it's the same kind of three, three year cycle. In our ordinance, we have it to where we follow the state as the state adopts it. We have to anyway, so this is something that we'll need to do in twenty twenty six anyway. Adopted by the July of twenty twenty six. And then again, the state, we try to work with electricians to kind of give some leeway on the corrections. So that'll be coming, and that's, that's again, kind of a no brainer one. But we'll keep you on the, on some of those changes.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the board on this presentation?
Thanks.
Trusty Wigan.
Question. Except everything here? Like, the thing that I'd be concerned about would be the EV ready. And there's no way we can opt out of that, correct?
We could, we cannot opt out, no, no, in fact, in fact, we have, the model code is the minimum that we, that we have to adopt. It can be, we can be more, you know, require more, there are other jurisdictions that are requiring more of that, but we, that's the minimum we have to adopt.
Do we have, or do you know approximately what the rate would cost to put? Electric vehicle and solar ready and all this type of stuff in a house?
In the house, well.
The reason I ask, I know when the big fire was down by Brimfield. That they actually re, or changed the code for the rebuild of those particular homes. Back to, I think, the eighteen or the twenty one, because it was going to increase the cost to rebuild over a hundred thousand.
Okay, I think, are you talking about the Marshall fires?
Yes.
Maybe some of the, the energy developments there.
Right, absolutely.
Yeah, I won't get into that, that, that's, you know, I can definitely follow up with you.
I would love to hear that.
A lot of that, I'll be honest with you, was a lot of misinformation early. And they had adopted the twenty twenty one codes, and truth be told, by the end of it, when they went back to what they had, that was more restrictive than what the twenty twenty one was. It was a, it was a mess and a very sad thing, there are a lot of good things came out of the Marshall fires with some of that, a lot of individuals created companies that would come and visit with. Survivors, fire survivors, that would help them with this insurance bit, because it was more of an insurance challenge than it was an adoption of the code challenge.
Right.
But it's, it's a. It's a lo- long story, but the, as far as the cost of the EV, no, that's something that we can get back with you. It's going to, it's going to be, I know a lot of jurisdictions already have this. And I know as of four or five years ago, Berth, some of these other towns were requiring all this part anyway. They, there've been different levels, it was a ready point, at one point, where they just had to have a conduit, you know, a pathway. For somebody to be able to run the cable to the panel. Now, everybody just making in residential, you have to have that installed. I don't think it's going to be a huge change, I'll, I'll get some numbers back.
Right, yeah, one thing we do need to make very clear to residents here is. On their insurance, you do have code upgrade coverage on that, and it didn't even come close to covering that, what they were trying to do at that time.
Right, no, it's definitely, definitely a challenge, and we, and just so you guys know, we, we do try to educate as much, we can't. Get involved with the, the insurance and between them by any means, but we do give our, our residents tips, and our builders, just so you guys know too, at these, these meetings that they have been going to since the beginning of the year. We have HBA, they're local builders, they have their input, this thing is a. Hasn't always been, but is one hundred percent a partnership and a collaboration between builders and jurisdictions to come up with something fair and consistent. And our whole goal too is not, I mean, our whole goal is not to increase the, the house prices as much as we possibly can, that's everybody's goal.
Thank you.
Trusty Moore.
Yes, so a few years ago, three or four, I was a part of a zero net energy demonstration home. In construction of that, and almost all of these code changes that you've been describing throughout this presentation, were a part of the home that we built. And I can tell you, whatever costs might transfer to the homeowner will be saved and pay for themselves in the energy. Efficiency of the home, that homeowner ended up saving twelve hundred dollars. A year in her utilities and actually made money back on the solar. We included the EV panel, all of the things, and that home is actually making that homeowner money at this point. So I don't want to listen to this presentation and have anyone at home. Walk away thinking that this is a bad thing, I think this is a really good thing. And especially in terms of long term affordability. This is just another step in the direction of making sure that we increase long lasting affordability for our residents. And this is doing it holistically, so.
I appreciate you saying that.
I'll come back to you. Trusty Dietz.
So I see it from the new home side, it's awesome to have someone who's had that experience. I see these codes as remodels and updates, upgrades, and I see the impact it has on residents now when you transition from that twenty eighteen. The twenty twenty one to the twenty twenty four. That's, and my worry, that's the only thing, is the impact that people, because we're not just talking about new homes when we put this new update through. We are also discussing the codes that have to change and what residents currently have to do, and how much those costs increase for those residents. For a simple electrical outlet, you now get to update your smoke detectors. So there's just a lot of things that go into, when you look at, I'm worried we'll see less permits pulled. The more that we approve some of these codes, because people can't afford to pay those costs. When they just need an electrical outlet switched out. That's my only concern is, do you guys have any plan for monitoring any kind of illegal work that would happen? When, how do you monitor that when people are doing all these upgrades and permits aren't getting pulled because of the updates to all the codes?
No, sure, sure, appreciate the question, that's, that, that is, that is always a challenge for, for building departments. We have no idea what people do in their homes. It's, it is a challenge, what we do here as a team is, Danae and I, and we, and our partners with Safe Built. We put on some reach out programs, we do some workshops, basement finishes. We do try to reach out and let people know the, the importance of our permitting. We talk about, you know, when things don't get permitted, that is a potential risk for insurance not paying out, that's, you know. We don't try to necessarily scare anybody, but we try to educate, so that we gives, we capture as many as, as we can. We don't require, and maybe I misunderstood you, but we don't require permit for someone to upgrade a, a device, a switch. And we, we're not going to go back into, if I understand your question, we're not going to go back into somebody's house, and they, they don't have to come up to today's code now, but I think what you may, if I'm understanding, you're saying if there's a, like a basement finish. Or something like that, then we will have to bring in some of these codes, but there are some existing, you know, we're, we don't make people. Deconstruct to meet the codes, but some of these codes with the energy part, the basement stays the same as it was in, in eighteen, but you're right, in twenty twenty one, it went up for insulation, so. Again, I, we battle all the time of what people do behind, behind their door. So our, our, our best take is to do what we're doing right now, to try to visit with people, be approachable. Again, Danae answers the phone every day, you guys would be so impressed with the customer service we get, we're trying to build trust. With, with people to come to us, that, that's our best attack, I guess, to, to get people to come to us.
Thank you. Okay, Trusty Wigan.
And on the solar. Okay. I'm going to state for the record real quick too, I'm not an electrician, I know that you know some maybe, but I'll do my best.
Right, I am all for solar, okay. I see on there you got to have enough room for three hundred square foot, do you know how many panels that is?
Hmm, I don't, but there's not very many, in fact.
Well, I have fifteen, and I don't think that, what are they, two by four, or? Okay, I, like I said, I don't even think mine would qualify, are, are we going to require everybody, if they do put a solar, to have three hundred square foot of solar on their?
No, the code is to allow for three hundred square feet of solar on the roof.
Okay.
It's, it's one thing I keep, and needing, I keep reminding myself. It's the solar ready code and the electrical ready, it's not, we're not requiring all of it to be there, but we need these, these places to be there. One thing to add a little bit to Trusty Moyer's comment is, is. We have a great neighbor in Fort Collins, we don't have to follow what Fort Collins does, I'm not saying that, but I can tell you that they are. Very aggressive on energy, and they have done so much work that the state consults them to see what the state should do. So with recently here, your building department has been, with all these meetings, we're, we're getting credible, we're getting voices, we're getting heard. And we can bring, it sounds to me like Trusty Moyer has a lot of experience with this, that, that even I don't have with, with the results. But we have a neighbor that is on top of it, to where we, they, they go every three years, they adopt the code. Again, I'm not selling you on anything, but I want you to know that we look at what they do, we look at what their successes and what maybe doesn't work with what they do. Maybe one day we'll be leaders in, in something, but at this point, it, it is fortunate to have projects like you're doing and what Fort Collins is doing, so we can learn.
Okay, last comment on this. Solar, I think, is definitely going to be the way for residential, especially with us getting away from fossil fuels now and going to the alternative energies. Which is a lot more expensive, and I know I've done it on my home and it saved me a lot of money, so.
No, that's good to hear.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Trusty Daly.
Uh, no comments or questions, but I feel very confident we are in capable hands, so thank you for the presentation, it was very easy to ingest, so I appreciate that.
Well, thank you very much.
Repertin.
Uh, Mr. Dykstra, appreciate the, appreciate the presentation, and I, I, I just want to say for the record, I, I do share some of the same concerns, I think, that Trusty Wigan may have, which is that the, I. Unfortunately, I think the Colorado General Assembly tends to chuck some things at us once in a while that unfortunately are not optional for us to, to adopt. So I understand that the EV ready and the solar ready stuff is, is required for us to adopt, but I do share the same concern that. You know, if you're, if you're a homeowner that's building a brand new house, and you want to, you know, I think it's always good for people to have options. So, you know, if you can save a few bucks, if you know that you're never going to buy an EV or something like that. You know, as a new home builder, that's now opportunity to save a little money, so I. I, I see how this is required though, so I just thought I'd share that concern.
No, appreciate that, and, and that's what we talk about, we, like all, we'll take anybody's information, and as a group, we talked with builders and code officials to figure out the best path.
Well, I appreciate the very good presentation, so thank you for coming up. No further questions from the board on this, thanks.
All right, thank you.
That is a very effective visual that you have there in your hands, so thanks for that.
It's like my, it's like my home library. Okay, okay, on to the consent agenda. Ms. Clerk, will you please read the title, the items on the consent agenda?
August twelfth, twenty twenty five meeting minutes, resolution number twenty nine dash twenty twenty five, a resolution regarding approval of opioid settlements. Resolution number thirty dash twenty twenty five, a resolution directing the town to file a proposition, file a proposition one, two, three, commitment. With the Colorado Department of Local Affairs, DOLA, to increase affordable housing in Wellington. Resolution number thirty one dash twenty twenty five, establishing an expedited review policy for eligible affordable housing projects. Resolution number thirty two dash twenty twenty five, a resolution supporting and authorizing applications for grant funding through the Colorado Department of Local Affairs to address affordable housing and state required housing plans. And resolution number thirty three dash twenty twenty five, a resolution approving the purchase of park equipment at Wellington Community Park for the Parks and Recreation Department.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion on the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
The second.
Ms. Clerk, make it a roll call, please.
Trusty Dietz.
Yes.
Trusty Wigan.
Yes.
Trusty Daly.
Yes.
Trusty Moyer.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Mason.
Yes.
Mayor Shosse.
Yes.
Mayor, that motion passes.
Thank you. All right, on to the action items this evening. Ms. Clerk, will you please read the title for item E one?
Resolution number thirty four dash twenty twenty five, a resolution approving a contract with Be Lake Productions LLC to provide a fireworks presentation on July fourth, twenty twenty six.
Thank you very much. Ms. Hodeling will present on this item.
Good evening, mayor and board of trustees, before you tonight is the fireworks contract for twenty twenty six. We did go out for quotes for this, and we've received three different quotes. It was very competitive and ultimately, after reviewing them, our recommended vendors, Be Lake Productions, who has provided the fireworks contracts in past years. With that, there's a firework contract, and then there's the optional video. I understand that the board of trustees has received some correspondence about that from residents. There, I've spoken to Be Lake Productions about some options that we could, the board of trustees could consider, so. If the board would like to do a new two hundred and fiftieth anniversary video. That cost is two thousand five hundred dollars, which was included, you know, in your packet tonight. If you wanted to use kind of this current last year's video, but also have. You know, just some minor modification, that's five hundred dollars, so, so one option on the table is you use kind of, you know, this past year's video. Or you can do an updated one, so that's one way to save money. I also know that there are some questions about the screen rental, the current size that we rent is, the size is forty feet by twenty feet. The town screen that we have, that we purchased for movies in the park, that's half the size, so that's twenty feet by eleven feet. So it's a, it's definitely a big size difference, so that could be an option to use our own screen and our own sound equipment. We do have a concern about staffing that day, to be very transparent with you all, that's the busiest day of the year, we don't. Everyone's working kind of from four AM through already, it's, it's a, it's a large endeavor. And our generators, you know, already set up with the bounce houses that we have, so. It may be feasible, it may be very difficult as well, so I'm just being very transparent about you, with you, and it's not something that we could ask volunteers to do, because it's very specialized equipment. So that could be another option, that we use our current equipment, but it is half the size, our current screen. So I just want to just have. So I just want to just have some options on the table for the board before you deliberate.
Perfect. Thank you. All right. Any questions from the board on this item? Trusty Teets?
I do have just a a few questions. So I was curious if there was a possibility to look at, approve this as is, but look at an option of if we could find a screen for a lesser amount. If we would be able to vacate the the screen, is there a termination date for when you submit? When you're going to order that forty by twenty screen? Is there a clause that we could put in that says if we find it at a more feasible cost for the town of Wellington, that we could vacate that screen, still do the video, but just vacate the screen?
Yes, please.
Okay, so Brian Erlich with Be Lake Productions. So what we do is we contract for the screen and the sound in January. So really, and the deposits do the the first of April. So anytime if you wanted to vacate at that point, you could. One thing I was thinking of just now when Kelly was talking, if you have a twenty by eleven screen, we also could rent another twenty by eleven screen and put two screens up, one on each end, and give people a better chance to see the video and the sound. And then we don't have to rent the one screen. Again, whatever staff you would need to run yours and to tie the two together so everything works at the right time, instead of somebody standing in the middle field going, three, two, one. I mean, uh, I mean, I that's, I'm not the audio visual guy. That's why I rented, rented out. So but if I don't know if they could work something out to where he could do two screens, that would be less money. Those screens have gotten expensive over the years. I mean, we started out there only sixteen hundred bucks and now they're ten thousand dollars. So it's, it's definitely something that, you know, to consider. But yeah, there are some options and and I'm happy to help search with you too to find better solutions. So it's just, this is what we've done.
I just want to make sure.
That's fine. And I understand. And I mean, because we've had very good success with these with these folks. So we want it to be good, you know? That's what I, I like, I heard the presentation about Fort Collins being the best on energy. We like to be the best fireworks presentation in the in the state, really, like I like to say. So I went to Severance, just sorry, went to Severance for Severance Days and they had a show. So anyway.
Since I have him up here, can I ask one additional question? When you had in your proposal, you had stated that there was an options to add additional for the two hundred and fiftieth celebration
Right.
of the ground, ground fireworks and items like that. About what kind of cost are you looking at when you add to that?
Maybe a, I don't think it'd be a thousand dollars.
Okay.
And that would be putting what we call a ground, a a a ground display where we would light up with what they call gerbs, two hundred and fifty or a US flag, you know, where it burns and you can see the flag standing there on the side of the field or 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 something like that. Really, there there are very many ways to modify the types of fireworks to increase more effects, more dramatic. You know, I could take out three eight inch shells and add seventy five, three inch shells. You know what I mean? I could do that kind of thing that they, nobody would know. They would just see the more upfront. So we can work on that however you want to do that. I mean, we're really thinking of doing some really grandiose things for the two hundred and fiftieth already. That's in the proposal. What would be the extra costs is if you wanted to do a ground display and put up something like that? I don't know. That's, some people do it, some people don't. I, you know, I just thought, well, this is a two hundred and fiftieth, you know, but it's up to you guys if you want to add something like that. I did not put that in the proposal. I just actually kind of thought about it when I was doing the proposal.
That's why I'd asked is because I was like, okay, what are we looking at? Are we looking at a thousand dollars? Are we looking at five thousand dollars to add a groundwork show? So that answers my question.
Okay.
Perfect. Thank you. Any further questions from the board? Trusty Moore?
Um, can you clarify for me what the difference is in the video each year? Because at one point, I was told it was just a date change and I've watched the video, but since COVID, I realized I can watch from my front yard, so I don't go up to the park anymore.
So you've seen the video?
I haven't seen the video in a couple of years. So I'm questioning, I've seen the videos several years, first of all.
Okay.
I have not seen it in the last couple of years because my yard is very comfortable. So what is the change that's made to the video year after year is my question?
We we introduce different segments. And so I have to put, pull those different segments out of the video. And then it it's just a little extra work to put those back in, put a new segment in, you know, so have you seen the, there's one of the ones that salute the soldiers where all of the, where they're saying goodbye to all their families?
Yes, I have.
And that you've seen that?
Yeah.
Okay. So that was one we put in about four or five years ago. Mainly changing the date because when we first did them, we said two hundred and forty one years ago. Well, it's not two hundred and forty one years ago. So I have to pull that section out and redo it. And it's just those kind of little modifications. It takes probably twenty to thirty hours to do those modifications.
Sure.
To do a new video is about a hundred and fifty to two hundred hours.
No, I'm not asking for that. The reason I ask is because several years ago I stood at that podium and I actually asked the same question because of the exorbitant cost for this item. And it was unpopular opinion and I'll preface by saying I do have a long line of veterans in my history and I love the Legion and everybody should know that. But I do think, and we got overwhelming response from the community, that this is an item that is very expensive. So the alternative that I could think of, or one alternative that I could think of was owning the video outright so that we can play it year after year, if the main difference is a slight modification in segments. Perhaps we have somebody in house that could do that. I feel like I have some experience in that with my background, but also if it's a date change, remove the date and continue to use the video if it's near and dear. If not, I would suggest that we just remove it entirely because I think there are many other things that we could spend that money on and the community's voice has been overwhelming.
I mean, the the video, just to remove, it's only five hundred dollars. That's the cost to modify the video.
Could, if possible, could we wait for deliberation after public comment and then just move along so we can start that discussion? I don't have any questions.
Any questions, trustee Wigan? No question for me. All right, we'll move on to public comment. Uh, any comments from public on this item? Okay, no public comment. Uh, do I hear a motion? That will do a motion before deliberation.
I make a motion to approve the contract as proposed with the additional options of the video with minor adjustments and possibly looking at the thousand dollar increase to support additional ground show fireworks for the two hundred and fiftieth.
Thank you.
Can we get a not to exceed or a specific?
Oh, yes.
Um, not to exceed fifty eight hundred, fifty eight thousand? Is that fair?
Yeah, that'll work.
I get a point of clarification. Your 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 motion was not regarding the resolution that's in the packet. You made a motion to just approve the contract absent the resolution. There's a resolution in there that includes a not to exceed dollar amount and so.
That's the correct number in the the resolution, fifty six thousand.
Yeah. Fifty six thousand five oh nine with the additional services, but the fifty six thousand five oh nine is the full video upgrade for the two hundred and fiftieth, correct? So, no, so then I apologize and correct that.
Did you say that you made a motion to approve resolution and then the number and then the contractor? Did you skip over resolution and just say contract?
I said contract.
Okay, so I think we'll need to we can amend it. Yeah.
You can amend that. I just want to be clear what I'm doing. So you want to amend your resolution to, or excuse me, your motion to approve resolution thirty four dash twenty twenty five with the changes you mentioned?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, perfect. Trust Wigan?
You need a second?
Oh, yeah, we do need a second. Okay.
Second.
Now, do you have, do you have a comment?
No comment.
Okay, trustee Meyer. Anything further from your perspective?
Nothing further that I haven't said already, but I, well, that's not true. I am a fan of adding additional items to celebrate the two hundred and fiftieth. I love as much fire as we can get. Thanks. In terms of fireworks. Right. Right, right, right. It would be quite the show now, wouldn't it? No, I work in disaster recovery, so I apologize for my slip there. I mean, in fireworks, fireworks, fireworks.
Yeah, yeah.
Let's deliberate.
You know, if you decided not to do the video, we still would like to do the audio because doing the show too fire, too music is what makes it so great and grand. So we'd maybe keep the audio part and not the video, but that's up to you. And there are three videos, not just one.
Sure. When I made the original comment, I think I was discussing the possibility of like live music at some point. I'd love to just explore what that looks like down the road some other year, but yeah, I hear what you're saying.
Okay, yeah. Well, we can talk about that.
Trusty Daly?
Um, in addition to the many, many emails that we received on this topic, the feedback I personally have received and experienced on the Fourth of July was mass amounts of texts, I think ten different people. In in this case, it seems like a lot of people messaging me, are the fireworks off? Are we not doing fireworks this year? Because it it just is significantly delayed because of the movie time. So anybody who's not at the park doesn't know what's going on and it's almost, I know it's approaching like ten o'clock. And it just seems like nothing's going to happen. So that was another just piece of feedback I didn't see necessarily in the the emails we got that I wanted to bring forward. I have a couple items on this. The first one being that, and I think our fireworks show is hands down like the best. So I love our fireworks show. I don't want anyone to say that I'm against it, that I'm not patriotic. It's my favorite day of the year in Wellington. I love Fourth of July and our independence. Okay, so put that aside. I think that the production value of the video is poor. It it resembles to me what looks like a PowerPoint presentation with a voiceover. In that, given the cost of it, that is not the production value that I want to represent our town in in celebration of the Fourth of July. So my feedback would be that it needs to be an incredibly higher level of production to warrant the incredible costs associated with it, like a professional video, right? Like a movie style type video, not like a presentation. Or we need to opt to find a different way to find a video that would represent our town at that level. There's so many opportunities to do this. This is a very obviously big year for our country. And I would love to be able to incorporate our community perhaps. I mean, I would put a video in the running if there was a contest of some sort. We have a theme for our parade every year. This one was regarding heritage this last year. And it would be cool to put out the theme topic and say, submit your videos that could be chosen to be played at our fireworks show. And then put a time limit on it that's appropriate. And then we can then distribute that or even livestream it for everybody who's not on site. So everybody's watching it at the same time. There's technology that does this, friends. So we we could be doing something like that. So even if the people who aren't on site, which I can watch from my hot tub. So I choose to do that, although this last year I did go and watch the video because I wanted that experience. And there were people actually at the park who were concerned if the show was happening. So I think if we're going to pay a large amount of money for this, I want to see movie Hollywood quality type production. Or I think we need to really rally our community to provide some options as a contest perhaps or something like that. But as of right now, I would not recommend that we include this in our contract because I don't think it's at the the quality of what the cost is. I just don't think it's, we're getting our money's worth for it. And but I think we should absolutely pursue something that has this similar sentiment.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Ten?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Erlich, excellent show you put on every year. I I'm just absolutely blown away every time I see it. I I just want to be clear on what the motion is here. The motion is to approve the contract in the fifty six thousand five hundred nine amount. Is that correct? Is that what we decided on?
Yes, that's, I think, what we decided on.
Okay. Understood.
Yes.
I I I think for me, I I certainly, I I would like to see the video this year. It it is the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary and I think we need to do a little something. Well, make sure that the the show is at least on par with what we've done in the past, just for the reason that obviously Cleveland's going to be closed and so we're going to have to look at some different options as far as what we can provide to the community. So I personally, though, I would want to see the five hundred dollar versus the twenty five hundred dollar option for the video, just some minor updates as far as that goes, which would put us back down at fifty four thousand five hundred nine. So I think I would, I would propose an amendment that we approve the resolution for the amount of fifty four five in the amount of fifty four thousand five hundred nine. And with the direction that we also have staff potentially look into some cheaper options as far as the screen rental, if we can get it for less than six thousand bucks, I would love to see that. And and more than that, I think I would actually like to see the option of two screens, if that's possible, if we can come under that six thousand dollar amount. So that would be, that would be my amendment.
Trusty Moore?
I just have a question. Is it possible for us to approve the resolution without the video AV piece to table that discussion? It sounds like we have until January, right? January is when deposits need to be paid and all that. Yeah, yeah. So.
We'll agree, but it's in January, but.
Right.
Yeah, I don't make a payment till March thirty first.
Okay, perfect. So it sounds to me like we have a little bit of time that in the next month or two, not extending past that, probably we could discuss this particular piece. Is that an option, Dan?
Yeah, it's always.
Highlight first that there's a there is a motion to amend motions pending that hasn't been seconded. So I just want to make sure that we don't just park outside with that. But yeah, that is a possibility.
And second that?
Okay, now it's been seconded.
Okay.
This resolution could be adopted, amended to remove all those items and we come back to that. Yeah, I mean, if, Mr.
So you can move for.
That would work.
Video, audio, screen are all optional. So you can approve the contract and say, we don't want this option, this option, or this option, or whatever you want.
I think I think right now the key thing is the fireworks, getting that.
Yes, that I agree. And then when we start asking for additional staff time dedicated to research and all of that, I just want us to be really intentional about what we ask for in that piece. Because I agree with trustee Mason. I can see we absolutely don't want to go backwards from what we've done before, especially this year. But I think there is a lot of discussion happening about it and there are a lot of feelings and a lot of community feedback. So I would amend the tell me how to do it, Dan.
Right now.
I can't do it now.
The motion. Now we're going to need to vote on this.
Right now, the the a motion to amend the motion and that motion to amend the motion will amend it to state to adopt resolution thirty twenty twenty five with a do not exceed amount of fifty four thousand five hundred nine dollars indicating a reduction for the lower cost video production. That that's, that's what your current motion to amend the motion is. So we need to take care of that before we go.
Okay, so I want to talk, but trustee Daly, go for it real quick.
Yep, sure. I think if we're considering that we need event staff coverage from four AM till midnight, two AM, whatever it may case, may be the case, twenty four hour coverage for the Fourth of July for staffing. Well, do we even have enough people to do that? Not to mention the cost of paying those people there. And let's keep in mind, it's a national holiday. So I would hope that our staff get to appreciate some portion of it if possible. So if at all possible and considering any solution to this, I would not recommend that we staff and use our screen for this purpose of cleaning up in the dark of millions of people moving at the same time when it's windy and there's fire around us. So I I just, I do not think that is. So I I I just, I do not think that is a vi- a viable solution, so I personally would want to take that off the plan if if for any of the solutions that we're considering is not a viable option.
Okay, thank you. Looks like you wanna talk, Trustee Wigan.
Just real quick, this is if we pass the fifty four thousand such, we can always change that down the road, right?
If we approve the contract as it sits.
As it is.
Pull things out before he actually pulls the trigger?
Correct.
And I would, I would. Yeah, 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 yeah.
Right, there's a few things like that, so we can always do.
So that would fall in line with with Lowry's amendment to kind of allow us to decide on this further? But we haven't, we haven't got there yet.
We're certainly on, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Mason's amendment.
That's where you're, that's where.
What I would say is go ahead and pass, my opinion, pass uh trustee or Mayor Pro Tim Mason's amendment, and that way, if we do wanna change something, we do have until January that we can work with him on it. But this way, at least you got a direction at the moment.
Yeah, I mean.
Okay, well, I've all, I like that input. Okay, I'm gonna say my piece. I like our fireworks. I like her video. I think the two fifty is important. Um, we did have outpouring community contact comment, more or less, to get rid of it because of cost. So that is something that I struggle with, not going along with the community and what was told to us as the board from the public comment there. Um, I'm all for us having the video, don't get me wrong. I remember, and some of you that are sitting on this board now remember, two and a half years ago, in a work session, I had brought up the fact that maybe we take the video away for a couple of years. We take that money that we normally spent on that, and we make a budget line so that we can purchase a screen and have our own video and audio video, and the board at the work session was all about it. Then when it came before us for a vote, it got shot down and lit on fire. No pun intended, okay? So are we more or less talking in circles about this, or do we wanna actually do something actionable for future Fourth of Julies? Um, that's, that's really what I want to know. Trustee Teets.
So, and I remember having that discussion very well, and I thought it was a fine idea to invest in the thing, and then we took feedback on kind of what Trustee Daly had stated is that if we purchase our own, we have town staff that is putting that up and taking that down at ten, eleven, however long it takes town staff to actually get to it. I think that's why it swapped back over, because the, I think the argument was is that we cannot expect our town staff to work twenty four hours that day, and this provided an option when we utilized Brian's option. It provided the town staff an opportunity to go watch the fireworks show, not sit and be like, oh, I don't have to work, but more that they're not worrying about fifty thousand other things and a massive screen and the storage of said screen and the damage possibly caused to said screen. And I think we had figured out that adding in some kind of insurance, town staff time and everything else organized with it, we got back to maybe the amount before wasn't so bad a cost.
Cost effective to go with him. Okay, so what I also heard there is we should not have town staff run a screen. That was a decision that was came to roughly two, two and a half years ago. So that's probably where we should stick now, coming from Trustee Daly and Trustee Teets. I think that's, that's understandable, right? We don't carry that insurance. We we don't have the ability to staff people um like that on a, on a holiday. So that, what an option does that leave us with? That leaves us with this contract as it sits? Is that in agreeance with the board? Does, do we wanna move forward with a vote on the motion? Okay, we're gonna move forward with a vote. Yes, tr- yes.
Mr. Seppino.
First, you need to vote on the motion to amend the motion.
Correct.
So first, you need to vote on whether you wanna accept Mayor Pro Tim's motion to make this a approval of Resolution thirty twenty twenty five with a do not exceed amount of fifty four thousand five hundred and nine dollars, representing a reduction to the lower amount of the video for the video production. So that's, you need to do that. Vote first.
Okay, perfect.
Trustee Teets seconded that, yep.
All right, clerk, may I get a roll call on the amended motion?
Trustee Daly?
No.
Trustee Moyer?
No.
Trustee Teets?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan? Mayor Pro Tim Mason?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
Mayor, that vote was four to two. That motion passes.
Thank you.
I would like to amend the motion.
At this point, that can happen, yes.
Yeah, I would like to amend the motion to exclude all the audio visual, well, excuse me, to to exclude the video component from the contract.
Second.
Uh, for clarification, does that exclude the the video entirely, not just the the production of it, but the the video, the screens, all of the costs related to a presentation of the video?
Thank you for clarifying. Correct.
Okay, well, that was seconded.
I uh, just to ask a clarifying question, Trustee Daly, is it your intention to up uh, ju- uh, it sounds like you want to approve the contract as written, so for the amount of fifty thousand zero zero nine, is it your intention to, that we continue to look at options for the video and talk about it later, or is it?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes, all intentions. I would like to go forward with the fireworks tonight, and then for us to find out the best solution.
I think I'm in agreement.
Before January.
Yeah, absolutely. I think, I think there's a, a way to solve everything and spend less money.
I guess it's time to do some research and and
Yeah.
A good, informed decision, okay?
Absolutely.
Uh, Mrs. Clerk, may I get a roll call on the amended motion by Trustee Daly?
Trustee Daly?
Yes.
Trustee Moyer?
Yes.
Trustee Teets?
No.
Trustee Wigan?
No.
Trust, um, Mayor Pro Tim Mason?
Assuming we're talking about this later, yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Talking about this later, yes.
Um, that vote was four to two, and the motion passes.
Okay. Now.
Now.
Let's, can, I wanna make this very clear, that that amended motion was for us to bring back the video for further discussion, so we have time to do research on getting a screen or maybe a more cost effective option.
Mm-hmm.
That is not an amendment to get rid of the video at this point in time. I am not gonna vote to get rid of the video. I'm gonna put that on the record right now. That's not happening. It's coming from me.
The intention is to keep a video.
We're gonna see what we can do monetarily. Does that make sense? Okay.
That's, that was exactly my intention as well, so.
Okay. So now, may I get Ms. Clerk a roll call on Trustee uh, the Trustee Teets' motion with Trustee Daly's amendment? And.
Would you like some clarification on?
Yes.
Yes.
As I understand it, the the motion that's before the body as amended by Trustee Daly and the board, it's a motion to approve Resolution thirty dash twenty twenty five.
Thirty four.
Thirty dash twenty twenty five, wait. I've been saying that wrong the entire time, so I apologize for that. So it's motion to approve Resolution thirty four dash twenty twenty five. Amended to, amended to exclude the production of the video and presentation of the video at this point, to be brought back at a later.
At a future date.
Is that?
Correct.
But that's not my, going off my motion.
Your motion has been amended by Trustee Daly. The the vote that you you had the original motion, and then it was just voted on to amend your motion in that way. That was what, that was what the vote that just happened was amending the original motion.
Two thumbs up, remember.
So the current motion, that is the current motion on the table. Okay.
Got it.
Sorry.
And that includes, was there extra?
I I have, I have something I wanna add to that. I have something I wanna add to that. Or just clarify.
Oh, goodie. Yeah, that's what I'm trying to do here, is I can't honestly keep up. Were you including extra for the two hundred and fiftieth? I thought that's what I heard you say.
I asked for it, but it was not included in the original calculation when we calculated it back down to the original amount. So my not to exceed was at first proposed at fifty eight thousand, and then it got knocked down to the actual amount of just what was quoted in the contract for the additional options. We did not include any additional funding that covered the two hundred and fiftieth adding to it.
Uh, no, I'm, uh,
Yeah.
Dan, can we? That's what, okay.
Yes, yeah, that's
Okay.
Exactly what it was.
Apologize, I missed, missed that. I recall that now, that that was at the very beginning, and then with the amendments and the
Okay.
Okay, I I would suggest that this item is certainly coming back before this board in some way or another, and uh, perhaps it would be appropriate if we're going to have to bring this back for an amendment on other video production that we can talk with Be Like Productions about
Yes.
giving a little more clarity
Yeah.
as opposed to just uh additional amounts that would probably cover it. Perhaps we can come back with another dollar amount.
Great choice.
Is that?
I, that's.
I mean, I feel like they're, uh, it it will be coming back.
Okay. Okay, so what's the cleanest way to go about getting that accomplished, Dan?
Bringing them back for the next time.
Just bring it back to a point further from now and just postponing the vote altogether.
No, no, no.
No, that's what I thought.
We're voting on the thumbs up in amended motion right now.
The current motion in front of you with the the changes, but there's, there's been direction to provide, to staff to investigate this, look at screens and video production and other things. So certainly, something has to come back in front of the board at some point. Um, so hearing the board that there's a desire for that two hundred and fiftieth
Yeah.
ground display, I think there will be a future need to amend the contract.
Yeah, and I would recommend when.
And also possibly the tariffs, so.
Yeah, recommend coming back with an exact amount at that time, right, rather than a ballpark figure.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Through that process, we can come back with an exact amount as opposed to just rounding up.
Yeah.
Okay.
Say what's, 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 what's a priority for us is that we have the fireworks, the equipment, the insurance, and the uh labor approved.
By when?
As soon as possible, because I gotta put forecasts in. You know, right now, we're sitting at a thirty percent tariff.
Yeah.
Um, importers are ready to release, and if I can give them my numbers, we're probably pretty safe.
Okay.
But for some unforeseen reason that we waited thirty days or sixty days, and I can't give them a forecast, and then tariffs go back up to a hundred and forty five percent or whatever the heck.
Yeah.
We we would be in trouble.
For sure.
So that's, that's one thing, and I I'm, I'm fine to just, let's, let's take the video and everything off. Let's approve the fifty, I think is what it says. And then let's come back.
And does that, does that, I mean, obviously, we can still approve more stuff for the two hundred and fiftieth at the next.
Yes, you can make a separate, separate deal.
That's all I needed. That's peace of mind.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Ms. Clerk, may I get a roll call?
Yep.
Do we set a date certain to discuss this again, or no date?
We're not.
It'll, it'll be before the contract.
Yeah, I.
Yeah, we're not tableing that.
Well, right. Something will be back to you in time for budget, because this has to be included in your twenty twenty six budget. So this, I I I'm not sure how long it's gonna take to do that research and get that.
And our budget has to be approved before he even talks to the companies about it.
So, yeah, so we'll, we'll, we'll bring something back to you in the next couple of weeks, September-ish maybe, first part of October.
Yep, let's move on the fireworks, so.
Okay, so Ms. Clerk, may I get a roll call on the, yeah, that'd be an amended motion?
Trustee Moyer?
Yes.
Trustee Teets?
No.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Trustee.
Did you say my name?
Trustee Daly, yeah.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Mason?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
Mayor, that motion passes.
Thank you. All right, thank you, sir. Well, well, we will have a.
The video right now is off.
At the moment.
At the moment.
Yep.
Okay.
And we will be in touch with you to schedule a time to come back and discuss that and add-ons.
And I'm, I'm happy to talk to anybody that wants to help with the production of the video.
Okay.
So whatever.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you, sir.
Okay, great. Thank you guys much.
Yep, have a good night. Um, let's take a quick five minutes, okay, and then we'll be back at it. Okay, getting back to it here, um, we have, or Ms. Clerk, will you please read the title for item E two?
Grace Village Funding Request.
Awesome, and then we have, uh, Donna, uh, Bisaki. Perfect, um, from Grace Village to present this item.
Uh, thank you very much, um, Mayor Chosse and and trustees for letting me come to you today. Um, I am here to request a ten thousand dollar grant from your discretionary fund to apply towards the Grace Village Community Services Center Food Bank Project. As you know, we bought a a building, a piece of property, uh, we closed on that in April, and we are really moving forward. It's so exciting because we're actually moving forward. Things are happening. We hired Blue Pine Construction to um manage all of the preliminary work and everything that has to be done, working with Cody, with the city. Um, figuring out where everything is, all of the details that most of us know nothing about, and and they're doing amazing job pulling things together. And um, we are moving forward. As you know, you know, this project is really needed in this community. I I think everybody understands that, how much the food bank especially means to the Wellington people, and our numbers are growing every week and that, so we really need this facility, and we're working really hard to get it done. The exciting thing is, I don't know if you guys heard or not, but we got a two hundred thousand dollar grant from the Schuler Foundation. And today, a hundred thousand dollars just landed in our checking account. So um, you know, we're, we're gathering the funds, we um, to, you know, get this project moving forward. We are um, part of the other um, hundred thousand dollars from the Schuler Foundation is a matching grant. So every dollar that we bring in up to a hundred thousand, we will get another check from them. So that's what we are really focusing on right now. So things are moving forward. We have um, uh, just gotten bids on a um uh, architect, uh, um, and engineering proj- uh, piece of the project and everything today. So they will be starting on designing, doing all the design work for the facility. When we're asking for this ten thousand dollars, we would like to apply it towards the ADA design package that we have to, you know, put together as we, you know, build this facility and everything. So that's where we would request your funding would go towards. Um, I can't emphasize enough how important it is that we, you know, get this funding going and that, and it's happening. Uh, when I started on this project, I'd apply for grants, and we'd reach out to people, and everybody would say, come back and see us when you're closer. Well, we're closer now. Um, I did submit some um, uh, preliminary budget here. I have to say that um, I made a mistake on this, the um, the eighty thousand dollars that we're spending on architect fees and and engineering fees and everything is not in this budget. It needs to be part of that building renovation budget, which, as you all know, is a moving target, and then listening to the gentleman speaking about all the new um, codes and things like that, you know, I mean, our, we're like everybody else right now. It's a best guess scenario on what our final construction costs will be. But um, we're asking, um, you know, little by little, we're building up those funds and um, accumulating the money to get this building done and that, and so we would really appreciate your help. The other part of this request is last year, the trustees um, gave us an additional ten thousand dollars last year. That was to go towards ADA bathrooms in the original um, building that we were putting together and that. Uh, we would like to, actually, I I misspoke earlier. We would like to take that initial, uh, initial ten thousand dollars that we really received last year, because we have to spend it by the end of this year, and apply that towards the ADA package design. because we have to spend it by the end of this year and apply that towards the ADA package design. And then the new ten thousand dollars that we're requesting from you would go towards building out the bathrooms and then in the new facility. So, um, again, you know, we are moving forward and it's, it's happening. It's really happening. And we are so excited to see, um, the funds coming in. We've, uh, got some grants in the works. And we're not counting on the five hundred or a million dollars from the federal government that may or may not show up, you know. We're, we're gonna make this happen.
Awesome, thank you. Onto discussion. Trustee Teetz.
Okay, so I just have to say I have a personal connection to this food bank, as I used to volunteer for the food bank, and we would roll the tables in and out of when it was located in the church. Um, I love being a part of it. I loved seeing the families that we helped along the way. So I'm grateful for the additional opportunities you guys are fighting for here in Wellington. I love the fact that Limer County is partnering as far as mental health services for this area. Um, I understand we have given the ten thousand for the ADA exceptions this last year, and then I think we just extended that because it was going to expire. So you guys came back to us and transitioned it to another option for the ADA bathrooms from an ADA elevator, to my understanding. Um, so I'm comfortable looking at doing funds for this. I'm comfortable at our twenty-five hundred threshold right now as all the extra applications. I'm super excited because we have had additional applications for funds. So I am comfortable with the twenty-five hundred, just until we hear and see the rest of these applications that are coming in. Um, my question is, is I know this has a sixty day report out period for what you spent out for the project. Um, are we going to require them to come back in sixty days to report that they're just continuing moving forward with the project? Or can, do we bypass that and say we are aware that this money is going towards next year's build? Do they have to expend the funds by December thirty-first?
The funds need to be expended by December thirty-one, twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
But, um, I believe that they have to put, they have to do the report out sixty days after the funds are expended.
Okay.
So if, if they don't get expended till December twenty-nine, twenty twenty-five, they've got sixty days beyond that date to provide that um, report out on how they use the ten thousand dollars.
Got it. So I think my question comes in, is these, is this funds that you're gonna utilize by December thirty-first? Or is it more beneficial to see you come back with that higher request January of this next year?
The, um, um, design process is going to be on, uh, in the works and that, and we will be able to use, we can apply that ten thousand dollars from twenty twenty-four um, towards the design process. So we would be using that by the end of this year.
Correct, I'm talking about this request.
This request would, would, we would have another year or two?
Mm-mm, no, by December thirty-first.
No.
Twenty twenty-five, correct?
The contract, that was, uh, the first request was in twenty twenty-four, and that was to be expended by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. So I thought, when you said.
No, I'm saying, so these funds that we grant for these projects, do they have?
Are you, you're asking about the additional ten thousand dollars?
Do they have a, an end date?
No.
Okay, that, see, that was my clarifying question. That's what I was trying to figure out. It was like, if you're gonna use this for the bathroom upgrades, would it be beneficial for you to come back this next year when you're actually gonna utilize those funds? Or they would expire by December thirty-first of this year? Perfect. So nope, then I'm comfortable with looking at approving twenty-five hundred now. And I'm assuming you guys can come again the following year to request additional funding for twenty twenty-six if it's necessary. Um, but I am aware that there is, what, I think we were.
Two.
Two, two additional requests right now, if not more. I sent it out to five nonprofits.
Okay, you got three.
Okay, got it. Okay, so I would be comfortable approving the twenty-five hundred and then hoping that you guys would return next year if you want to request additional funds.
Um, okay, thank you, Trustee Teetz. One, one thing I wanna just clarify for everybody, okay? Um, we put thirty thousand dollars away for this fund, okay? Um, to date, we have twenty-four thousand seven hundred and sixty-two dollars left in this fund. If, let's just say, we give them the ten thousand dollars, they, that moves us down to fourteen thousand, okay? I'm just gonna get rid of the other numbers just for math, okay? The other two applications, or three, would bring us down to having five hundred dollars left in it. That's us using it pretty wisely and to its full extent for what we designed it for if these other three do get approved. So I just want to keep that in mind, but I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention. Trustee Moore.
Um, so I appreciate where you were going with your question, Trustee Teetz, because I had a similar one, just in terms of like the construction timeline, because I have not been close to that in some time. Um, when do you anticipate construction starting? And, um, if, if it's renovating these bathrooms, that's one thing, but if you, you, what's the timeline?
There are no bathrooms.
Right, right.
There are no bathrooms in the facility right now. Um, we anticipate, um, right now, like I said, we're, um, pulling into the architects and, um, I'm not the exact person. I should have Mike here from Blue Pine explaining all the timeline and that. But we, uh, anticipate going out to bid for the actual general construction, uh, next spring. And then, so we should be able to start construction. You guys probably know this better than me, by, you know, next summer or whatever, we would be using that money. By, by the end of next year, we would be using that additional monies to build those bathrooms.
Perfect. To answer your question, Trustee Moore.
It does. I would love to give everyone all the money, always. Um, I just wonder if we're gonna get any more applications between now and December, and if construction is not until next spring or summer even starting, which, I mean, it always takes longer than you think it's going to. I would wonder if we might want to not award the full ten thousand, but a good amount, um, to add to your growing collection. Um, just to allow a little wiggle room in case another application does come in, um.
Can I ask clarifier real quick?
Yeah, totally.
Well, what do you, what do you consider a good amount?
I mean, assuming we get an application for the full twenty-five hundred, I would say, what, seventy-five hundred? Or eight thousand?
For approval tonight.
Which leaves enough for one more application for twenty-five hundred, knowing that when you're actually ready for construction, you can come back and ask for ten more thousand dollars, right? You know?
Yeah.
And that, to me, feels like, just in terms of for other organizations, like a better, um, solutions to allow for us to help more um, people while still providing Grace Village with what it needs.
Well, and whatever you would, um, give us tonight would be doubled, because we can apply that towards the hundred thousand dollar matching grant. Um, so, um, it has, you know.
Sure.
It has some benefits.
I totally appreciate that, too. I mean, ultimately, I'm open to the full amount or not. I just wanted to throw that out there as a possibility because I would hate to not be able to award an additional grant if we get one. But that's if, and you're seizing the opportunity. So I can be swayed, and I love the project and appreciate it so much.
Thank you. Trustee Wigan.
Question, is there a limit on the matching?
A hundred thousand.
But is there a limit as far as timeframe?
Uh, I think we have a full year up through twenty twenty-six.
So we have plenty of time.
To match it, yeah.
Increase it.
Yeah.
So if we did, whether it's twenty-five hundred or five thousand, but we do it again next year.
Yeah, exactly.
You can still get it. This way it would leave options for other people to come in, too.
We, we do, we do anticipate that we're gonna do, get that matching hundred thousand dollars quickly, because we are working really hard.
Something that just popped in my head, too, okay? So, um, say we do a partial tonight, right? Um, and then no applications come through, would it be improper for us to reach out to them and say, hey, now would be a good time to submit for that if you want to get it this year? There's nothing legally that would stop us from doing that. Okay, so that's an option.
And also the boys' club that we actually cut back.
Yeah, gives us, so just thoughts, okay. Uh, Trustee Daly.
Uh, I appreciate that we're negotiating on the money, but I do want to acknowledge the actual contribution to our strategic plan that this project provides. Um, sometimes spending more money where the money can be more activated and impact more people makes sense. Um, the Community Services Center brings, we have a desert of multiple services in the town of Wellington. Town cannot provide, that local businesses cannot provide, and otherwise charitable organizations couldn't otherwise provide without additional resources. The Community Services Center, um, provides the brick and mortar, the volunteer opportunities for people who want to volunteer, and then the opportunity to serve our community with a food bank on a regular basis rather than twice a month. Um, so not only is it making this very valuable area for gathering, um, and celebrating and supporting one another, which is absolutely part of our, um, cultivate community spaces strategic plan. It also helps to foster economic vibrancy by, by making sure that people are more secure when it comes to food, for food security. And yet, above and beyond that, for all the other services that they may host there. Um, so I do want to just bring attention to that and thank you and the rest of your board for enduring this huge, huge monumental project for the town of Wellington and the services that you provide our community, because they are very important. You're filling a gap that is, um, so scary that we have here. Um, above and beyond that, though, I do want to acknowledge that projects like this move as quickly as money moves. So when we're asking, you know, like construction timelines and those kind of things, that's why the environment for this project has changed so much is because they are in a point now where they can do construction versus doing a huge capital project of a new construction project, but rather the rehabilitation and redesigning of their current space. So this project has completely changed from what it was before to what it is now, and it is now viable to take action on as soon as possible. So that's why raising funds as soon as possible for this project are really gonna make a meaningful difference, because that means they can start working now. They're not still fundraising to get this massive amount of millions and millions and millions of dollars. They're ready to, to start as soon as they can. So raising money now with matching funds now helps them to move quicker. So when we're wondering when they can do it, they can move quicker when they get more money. And that's the answer to that question. So, um, I am completely in favor of, uh, the seventy-five hundred dollars that we're talking about, leaving space for another full, full, like the standard, um, amount that would be provided to another organization if they were to apply for a grant. And I'm really excited to review the applications for the others that are coming as well. And I think we're doing really meaningful difference in helping activate um, important partners within our community to amplify the money that we're giving them to do more and more and more with them and, and make them really impact our community. So I would propose as a, you know, a meeting in the middle there for us to approve a grant of seventy-five hundred dollars tonight. Um, and then in the future, if there is money available, to also reach out to them and ask them to apply further, so long as there's not a restriction of applying for a grant multiple times within a year. I don't believe so. So, um, that would be my recommendation to move forward, and then I can't wait to review these additional grant uh, applications that we have. So seventy-five hundred dollars would be my recommendation based off Trustee Moore's suggestion.
Is it seventy-five hundred or eight thousand? Is your math correct?
My math, uh, we would actually, okay, so if we gave out the maximum amount to everybody that has currently applied, say that all gets awarded, we would roughly have, what is that, twelve sixty-two left in our bank? Twelve hundred and sixty-two dollars left in our bank, because I got rid of that seven sixty-two, so we add that to five hundred. Five, six, seven, twelve, right, twelve sixty-two. I think that's math. Um, so I think that, yeah, that's what we would have left. It would not be the twenty-five hundred amount. But if we did the seventy-five hundred, then, and we didn't give them the ten, then that would be twenty-five hundred plus twelve hundred. So what does that equal?
What's?
So, yeah, we'd have money left. We'd have money left to give to other organizations. Does that answer your question?
Being kind of.
Okay, Trustee Teetz, I'll get back to you if you need it.
I'm sorry, I need to clarify around something, because I, are you, you're a shovel-ready prod, project? Or are you still in the initial design phase? That's what I'm trying to figure out, is it was, I'm hearing they are ready to go now, but are you in design phase or are you shovel-ready phase?
No, we're in design phase.
Thank you. Okay, so you're looking at summer to fall. Right, okay, that's all I, I needed to know.
We're in the design phase right now.
Perfect, thank you.
I'm gonna clarify on that even further. Um, does us approving you a certain dollar amount hold you back from becoming shovel-ready?
No.
Okay, thank you. Um, Mayor Proton.
Well, I'll just make this easy. I would be inclined to support the seventy-five hundred. Um, and of course, if we have money left at the end of the year, please do come apply.
Come back.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Okay, do I hear, yes? Oh, I gotta get a little comment, too.
One quick thing to bring mention to, I know this great project we got going on, okay? It's gonna affect a lot of people. If we hold off not doing as much to seventy-five hundred or ten thousand or whatever, and we can give it to other people that are in need, how many more people can we reach out besides you guys? So again, kind of look at the expansion that we can actually reach, too.
Right, and, and I, I completely understand that. Um, I'm devil's advocate to that statement real quick. What if nobody comes and requests it, and then, you know, they're just that much further behind on their funding? Even though she just shared with us that it wouldn't affect the groundbreaking, but you get what I'm saying there.
It wouldn't affect the groundbreaking or anything else from what I'm understanding.
It would just leave more in our account that's not actually used to help the community at this current.
At the moment that we're looking at, right?
But next year, if they come for ten thousand, maybe we have twenty others that do it. So it could be an infinite game of, of.
Yeah.
You know, and, and it's, and it's, it's a, you know, other than this two hundred thousand dollars, which was a godsend in that, most of it's coming in little by little. We got a twenty-five thousand dollar grant from the Betcher Foundation. You know, we're, we're collecting, you know, money here and money there, and, and it's growing, but it is little by little. And so every little bit helps, and especially with the matching grant, you know, we'll get that additional hundred thousand from the Schuler Foundation once we bring in another hundred thousand dollars and that, and so.
And we have a full year on that.
We have a full year on that. But, you know, again, you know, we, we want to be able to start, we do have a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar line of credit from, uh, Meridian Trust. We are setting up to be able to move forward and to have the money in the bank to build as, as the expenses come up, you know, so we're, we're, we've got the money to pay for the, um, all the design phase and everything right now. Um, and then the next piece, you know, whatever the next piece is, and the next piece in, in that. So it's, it's not like we're gonna have, you know, five hundred thousand dollars in the bank all at once. It's growing in that. But each piece of the, of the project, you know, we, we want to be set and ready to go to have the money. Then, once we go out to bid and that, and whatever that costs, you know, to move, to move, start moving forward and that. So every ten thousand dollars we get, every twenty-five hundred dollars we get, every, you know, thirty thousand dollars we get just builds that pot so we can move forward.
Right, but right now you got enough money in your pot to get through the design stage.
Yes, we do.
Which you will not be breaking ground until next mid-year, correct?
Yeah.
And the only reason I even bring that up is, you know, if we do got money at the end of the year, we can always reach out to them.
Yep.
Um, because I know Pastor Marks is gonna keep an eye on this. He will be back here talking to us. And if we got it, absolutely, at that point. But this way it gives us some options if we do get some people that's in need, maybe the, uh, the veterans thing. I'm thinking things on that order that we can put the money to, that we may tie it up.
So, so are you, are you, what, what's your dollar amount you're in favor of?
I'd either twenty-five or five thousand. I mean, that would, I think either one of those would work.
Not seventy-five hundred?
I, I think that's tying up too much that we.
Okay, okay, thank you. All right, I'm gonna open this up for public comment real quick. Members of the public wishing to speak will be given three minutes. Please state your name for the record and sign in at the table behind the podium. Okay, no public comment. Okay, moving for a motion. Do I hear a motion on this item?
I move to amend the grant amount requested by Grace Village in the community grant application to seventy-five hundred in support of the construction of ADA amenities for the Wellington Community Services Building with funding being provided from the Board of Trustees discretionary fund.
Do I hear a second?
Can I understand?
We will have more discussion after the motion.
Right, okay.
Is there a second? Thank you. Okay, trustee Moyer.
Thank you. Um, so if we were to award Grace Village eighty-five hundred and award each grant that we have that we know about, pending discussion, the full amount they're asking for, plus hold room for a full twenty-five hundred for another grant if it comes, that would leave us with two hundred and sixty-two dollars. So I would be in favor of that. I would like to amend the motion.
And this is leaving opportunity for one other.
This is leaving opportunity.
Has not already.
That is not already up for the full twenty-five hundred, and it would leave us.
I think it's also worth mentioning that one of the applicants reached out in July. They've been reached out to twice and they have not gotten back to us. Hopefully, they hear about this and they will be reaching out, but there's a possibility that they may not even come forward with their request. Okay? So I get.
Dan, Dan did this, so I stopped.
We're doing this.
Yeah, that's the theme tonight. I would like to make a motion to amend the motion to uh, award eighty-five hundred to the Resource Center.
Second.
Okay.
So now this is open for discussion, correct?
Yeah, we can discuss it. Yes, trustee Dietz.
And I can make an amendment suggestion to this, can I not?
At this point, we would have to vote on the amendment, and then you can come back with your own amendment.
Okay.
Just like, I feel like we're groundhogging, okay?
Okay, so in my statement, it's nothing that I don't want to fund you guys. It's just I do want to leave the extra opportunity because I know some people are waiting for their mid-year budgets to come through before they know their need. And that is ending at the end of August for their mid-year reporting. Um, I just know this from someone who has submitted an application and they don't want to take too much if they don't need too much. Um, so I am going to vote no on the eighty-five hundred, but I would vote yes on five thousand.
Thank you. Further, uh, she, she, she would be amicable, Ross, is that how I use that word? Um, to doing five thousand today, and obviously they have the option to bring it back. Or if we sell money on the table, they can come back later this year, we can reach out to them. Is that? Okay. So at this point, is there any further discussion before we vote on the amended motion? On, on Lowry's amended motion. Sorry, trustee Moyer's, I, you know what, you're right. I apologize. Okay, so we're going to vote on trustee Moyer's amended motion. Ms. Clerk, make it a roll call, please.
Trustee Daly.
Yes.
Trustee Moyer.
Yes.
Trustee Dietz.
No.
Trustee Wiegand.
No.
Mayor Pretten Mason.
No.
Mayor Shosse.
No.
That motion is for no to yeses, it fails.
Okay, now, I feel like we have an amended motion on the floor, trustee Dietz.
Currently, the original motion is on the floor. It's a motion to approve the amount of seventy-five hundred dollars. It was not successfully amended.
Yes.
So now I can make a motion to amend the original motion. I would like to make a motion to amend the original motion and approve five thousand dollars to Grace Village and their funding with encouragement to have our town staff reach out if we have funding left at the end of the year, and also encourage Grace Village to reach out the first part of this next year for additional funding.
I second that motion.
For the record, Mayor Shosse, I apologize, who seconded?
I did.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, are we ready to vote on the amended motion to pass? No, this, just the amended motion.
Just the motion to amend is what we're working on right now.
That's what we're at. Ms. Clerk, make it a roll call, please.
Trustee Daly.
No.
Trustee Moyer.
No.
Trustee Dietz.
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand.
Yes.
Mayor Pretten Mason.
No.
Mayor Shosse.
I seconded it.
Yeah.
I'm going to vote no.
All right.
Back to the original motion.
Let's go.
Hey, guys.
Okay, let's just.
Wrap this up with a bow. Roll call, please. Okay, can I get a roll call on the original motion?
Seventy-five hundred.
Seventy-five hundred.
No, it's ten thousand. The original motion is one thousand.
The motion is seventy-five.
Seventy-five hundred.
Trustee Daly.
Yes.
Trustee Moyer.
Yes.
Trustee Dietz.
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand.
Yes.
Mayor Pretten Mason.
Yes.
Mayor Shosse.
Yes.
Where that motion passes.
Thank you. Hey, we got there a long way. Been a fun night, guys. I appreciate you coming forward and asking, and then if there's more funding available, we'll be.
We would appreciate that. And, you know, we have a gala coming up on October fourth. I left little postcards on your desk here. We'd love to see all of you there. It's going to be a really, really fun, cool event. And um, we hope to bring in a lot of money there towards our matching grants, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
For your time.
Appreciate it.
Have a good night. Okay. I will now recess the Board of Trustees' regular meeting and open the Library Board Meeting. Time being eight thirty-three PM. Ms. Clerk, make it a roll call, please.
Trustee Wiegand.
Here.
Trustee Cannon. Trustee Daly. Trustee Moyer.
Here.
Trustee Dietz.
Here.
Mayor Pretten Mason.
Here.
Mayor Shosse.
Yes.
Mayor, the Library Board has a quorum.
Thank you. Okay, um, Ms. Clerk, will you please read the title for item F-one?
Reconsideration of Library, Library Resources Policy.
Thank you very much. And we have Ross La Genet.
Whoa, so close.
Genet? Sorry, bad.
It's fine, it's fine.
What is it?
La Genet.
La Genet.
There you go. Good.
Okay, I'm terrible. Okay, um, you'll be presenting on this.
Yes, so I'm going to propose tonight um, that we use Ross's rules instead of Bob's rules or Robert's rules. This will be very easy and quick. Um, I do want to take this opportunity really quick to um, kind of refer back to Donna. Um, so Ross puts out SOSs. I want to make it clear to the public that we take all donations for the food bank. Even though they are, want to build a building, does not mean that they are suspended. I love it when our chest is filled up, and so keep bringing it in. There, now we'll go into like, okay. So um, my name is Ross La Genet, I am your Public Library Director. Um, we have a couple policies we discussed last week at the August nineteenth work session. No surprises, the only thing that has changed in the packet is draft has been removed. Um, so tonight I am here to have the um reconsideration of library resources policy approved.
Thank you. Any comments from the board on this item? No, okay. Are there any comments from the public on this item? No. Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve the reconsideration of the library resources policy as presented.
Second.
Are there any further comments? No. Ms. Clerk, make it a roll call, please.
Trustee Wiegand.
Yes.
Trustee Daly.
Yes.
Trustee Moyer.
Yes.
Trustee Dietz.
Yes.
Mayor Pretten Mason.
Yes.
Mayor Shosse.
Yes.
Where that motion passes.
Thank you. So did, I wasn't, I, I wasn't either.
I have my stack.
Please read the title for item F-two.
Data Privacy and Immigration Related Request Policy.
Thank you. How about it, sir?
So again, following Ross's rules, um, it's the same thing. This is a Senate bill um, that passed at the last legislative um, session. And so I am just here to, again, we discussed it at last week's work session, August nineteenth. Um, it is the Data Privacy and Immigration Related Request Policy so that we can abide by state law.
Question from the board? No. Public co, oh.
And that abides by state law and federal law?
Senate bill, it's a Colorado Senate bill, yes, that we do not collect information.
Okay, and that goes with the federal government, too, correct? There's nothing in conflict.
No.
No, it's for this, it's for the state of Colorado. You're welcome.
Okay, any public comment on this item? No. Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve the Town of Wellington Public Library Data Privacy and Immigration Related Request Policy as presented.
Second.
Any further comments or discussion from the board? No. Ms. Clerk, make it a roll call, please.
Trustee Moyer.
Yes.
Trustee Dietz.
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand.
Yes.
Uh, trustee Daly.
Yes.
Mayor Pretten Mason.
Yes.
Mayor Shosse.
Yes.
Where that motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, sir.
This is the quickest update we've ever gone, it's a record. Thank you. No, it's kind of cool. We can try that next time. There's more policies coming, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I will now adjourn the Library Board Meeting and reconvene the Board of Trustees' regular meeting, time being eight thirty-seven PM. On to reports, Mr. Dan Sapiens, the town attorney.
No reports today.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia, town administrator.
No reports tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Um, all our staff, um, reports were in the packet. Uh, are there any board reports? Trustee Moyer.
Um, today is National Women's Equality Day, and I just wanted to say uh, thank you to all the women that have come before us, and thank you to all the women that continue to fight for those equal rights. Go ladies.
Thank you. Trustee Wiegand.
Uh, the, the Board of Beha, Behavioral Health, boy, I can't even talk, sorry about that. But uh, we met a couple weeks ago. And just bringing you a little bit of an update on the Longview Campus. Uh, they're averaging seven hundred visits a month. So it's really making a big impact on the county. And twenty-four percent of those are minors. And they're getting ready to open up the uh, another wing for the minors here, and I think that's going to be happening. They're just getting ready to. Right, they're just getting ready to do that. I think it's going to be in October.
Awesome.
So they're doing a fantastic job.
Awesome, thank you. Uh, trustee Daly, any reports?
For Main Streets. For Main Streets, uh, there's a couple events coming up. On the fourteenth is going to be an art crawl and the ribbon cutting for our new murals in town. So I really hope that everybody from our board can come and that the community joins us. It's such a wonderful enhancement to our downtown, uh, and it's, it's amazing. You know, some of our murals that we have, so uh, stop by and see them if you haven't seen them already. Um, and then the Main Street Annual Dinner is also coming up, and I hope that our board will put it on your calendars for August twenty-fifth. More details to come, but it'll be a great event and an opportunity to talk more about construction projects in town in addition to celebrating Main Street. Uh, I recently got to travel to Trinidad um, as a member of the Municipal Leadership Academy um, where I got to see the arts districts realized um, and how they have refurbished and done some significant enhancements to their downtown um, paired with other grant opportunities. But uh, I got to spend time in Trinidad and learn about, a little bit about their history uh, and network with other communities across the state of Colorado. Uh, we've all, were assigned projects to work on and start um, developing almost curriculum for it so that we can train each other and then also distribute it to our communities. And the portion that I was assigned was for AI, so AI related to municipal organizations. So I'm very excited about that. I think I have a lot to contribute to it, and I'm a part of a team with uh, others across the, the state. And so, so far, it's been an incredible um, experience. We got to talk to Sam Light, we got to talk a lot to the Betcher Foundation um, and some other guest speakers as well. It's been incredibly inspiring and a great use of my time, I believe, to travel down to Trinidad. The next stops, I believe, are Grand Junction and Winter Park.
Awesome, thank you.
On the date for the Main Streets dinner?
Oh, sorry, I did say August, it's in September.
Okay.
I just.
It must be September twenty-third.
It's in September.
The last, the third Friday, or is it a Saturday?
I don't know, but it's not in August. I do know that.
Because their art walks are like the third.
Oh, oh, no, the art walk is for sure September fourteenth.
Okay.
But now I don't even know if I'm sure.
Well, we'll, well, uh.
But they're coming up in September. I'll, I'll send out the dates and everything to you guys.
Perfect, thank you.
Um, trustee, any reports from you?
None.
No, Mayor Pretten.
No report tonight.
Okay. I do not have any reports either. Yeah, I mean, we, we got it done tonight. It was a little interesting, but it was fun. We can clean it up a little bit. We can clean it up a little bit. All right, um. Ms. Clerk, will you please read the title for item H-one?
For the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations and/or instructing negotiators pursuant to twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four E CRS and for the purpose of receiving legal advice pursuant to twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four V CRS reg, regarding acquisition of water resources by the town as required by CRS twenty-four dash six dash four oh two two D, sorry, four oh two, two D point five, two A and two E. The executive session proceedings will be electronically recorded and the record will be preserved for ninety days through November twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to go into executive session?